Please rise for the education by President Bob Schottner, retired leader and pastor.
Sort of.
He means no introductions.
Let us pray. For our God, King of the universe, for this day of life, we give you thanks for our city and all who use their gifts responsibly and creatively to assure all of our citizens a safe, healthful, enriching, and productive place to live. We also give you thanks for the diversity of your people who live together in this community and the wealth of gifts they bring to our common life. We give you thanks for the beauty and resources of this area and your creation. We give you thanks. So with thankful hearts, we now ask you to bless this city council meeting this evening. Bless those elected to serve in governance of our community with minds that enable them to grasp the complexities of and opportunities within the issues before them. Bless them with hearts that will enable them to consider the best good for all concerned among competing issues and bless all here with speech that will be respectful and fair. Bless, we pray, all administrators, staff, and faculty who are now beginning a new year of learning among students in our schools, colleges, and universities. Bless all students with safety, respect for one another, and appreciation of the opportunity to learn as they participate in the educational experiences offered to them. Hear our prayer, oh Lord, and prepare our hearts and minds to receive your responses of guidance and grace. In your great name we pray. Amen.
I pray to the nations to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with a presentation on the Carolina Cycle Challenge. Led by our old man, he is.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. We have a lot of exciting things to talk about today, but I just want to go ahead and kick off it to talk a little bit about the Carolina Cycle Challenge. Now, of course, I think most of you, many of you in this room are here and are part of an organization that's helping the new bike ride, which is Brett's Ride. It is similar. It has just got a new name, same spirit, new name. And it's really important to our community. And as we talk about branding our community and the importance of things looking similar with the same feel of the importance of the creativity, you know, just the beautiful city, the different activities that we have that promote active, healthy lifestyle, this is just one of the events that follows with that, the Carolina Cycle Challenge. So we're excited and we're going to, you're going to learn a little bit more about that in a minute. And you'll notice in a few minutes when we watch a video, the logo, if you haven't seen it, it's got the same Hickory colors, the same feel. Instead, we're all, it's nice to see a lot of things working together in tandem as we move forward. Another thing I want to mention is about the committee. Of course, this committee is working very hard, meets every Friday at 7:00 a.m., and also the board meets regularly. So we have a group of local businessmen and women, different nonprofit organizations, the city, many departments are involved in this as well. The Hickory Foundation, YMCA, are all working to make this ride a success. And I don't want to give all the details away, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to John Link, who's a local businessman, a member of the Lake Hickory Rotary, as well as the vice chair of this new Carolina Cycle Challenge.
You've probably seen these posters around town, and you can see the Hickory Swish is incorporated into our poster. So we're kind of tying to Hickory, active, well-crafted. You know, several weeks ago in the newspaper, the headlines, what did it say? It was pretty, I was distraught. It was a Sunday morning. You tell us, talking about the lifestyle and Hickory fares poorly in the metro area. That touched me pretty hard that day because, you know, as a businessman and someone that lives in a town that I love, I've been here 20 years, you know, the people in this town can't really do much about the economic blows that has happened, but the business leaders in the community can get together and pull off events like this and bring people to Hickory to show them what a great town we have. Our kids and our future, we want them to remember rods like this bike ride that they'll come home every year to come to our challenge. The name, the Carolina Cycle Challenge, we went through a lot of stress coming up with the name. You know, we wanted to call it Hickory Cycle Challenge. We're going to call all these names, but you know why we came up with Carolina? Because in the future, this will be bigger than Hickory. We will have people coming from all over. This year, we got a 10-mile and a 32-mile ride. The future could be a 50-mile ride, a 100-mile ride. You know, we got a lot of opportunity to merchandise this city and bring people in from outside Hickory, from Charlotte, from Asheville, to see what a great community is. We got a lot of good assets in this town and a lot of great people. We can make a difference, and it's inspiring to go to these Rotary meetings and see all the business people stand up and come forward and help us and pull this off. I especially want to thank the mayor and the city council for their support and the entire city. It's unbelievable, the fire, the police, Parks and Rec, communications, all the departments in this town have come together to make a difference. You know, we will, someday we can sit back and look at what we've done, and it's because of the actions of you guys that's making a difference in our community. You know, it's going to be a tough few days coming up to October 6th for the big ride, but we're up for it, and we just wanted to tell you thank you for supporting us and allowing it to happen. This ride is being pulled off with the cooperation of five area Rotary clubs. That's a lot of local businessmen that are touching it. You've got the YMCA in town that's really helping us. They've stepped up. The Hickory Vela Club, that's the bike riders. And mainly you guys, we couldn't pull it off without your support. And for that, I want to say thank you, and come ride a bike with us. And we're going to look at a quick video.
What's the shortest section of ride?
Yeah. I'll say, bike riders of all ages are allowed to take part in the Carolina Cycle Challenge in Hickory, North Carolina. This exciting event, formerly known as Brett's Ride, raises money to help fight pediatric cancer and has contributed over $1 million since it was founded in 2004. This year, the Rotary Clubs of the Catawba Valley are taking the lead in continuing the bike ride, contributing their time and talents to continue one of the most popular bike rides in the state. They are joined by the Hickory Vela Club, the Hickory Foundation YMCA, the city of Hickory, and many other community organizations and members. The event will offer something to all members of the community, including families with toddlers, students, casual riders, and serious cyclists. The Cycle Challenge will include options for a 10-mile ride, a 32-mile ride, and a top ride for the little ones. There will also be food, entertainment, and a kid's zone for family activities, all on Sunday, October 6th, in Hickory, North Carolina. You can learn more about the events by visiting carolinacyclechallenge.org, where you can find instructions for registering, volunteering, or helping with sponsorship. The Carolina Cycle Challenge is part of Hickory's Active Well-Crafted Program to promote citizens staying healthy and active. We'll see you on Sunday, October 6th, for the Carolina Cycle Challenge.
And then, let's hear it for the Lord.
I do want to, Bill Shilton, stand up. He is, I think, thank you for spearheading this and...
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, please, stand up. Thank you very much for what y'all are doing. I am, I'm the committee, but this is part of this Active Well-Crafted, and it's exciting to see all the different groups coming together, working for one thing and making this place and making it work. But thank you both very much.
Sometimes we don't recognize the generosity of people to the extent we should initially. John Link's a very modest guy. I asked him what he does, he says he sells hamburgers. Well, he owns all the McDonald's in Hickory. So, but when we needed help with Zara's Playground, he and the others, McDonald's people and the foundations got together and raised $35,000 for Zara's Playground. So there's a lot of good things going on. A lot of people are making tremendous contributions to this city, and we thank you. Business well-crafted, which requires that you be an old business and a successful, ongoing business.
That's correct. Mayor Wright, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Crone, good to see everybody again tonight. My name's Alan Jackson, and very proud to be a volunteer member of the Business Development Committee here for the city of Hickory. Purpose of the Business Development Committee has always been to support the growth and continuation of existing as well as new business ventures in their Hickory community. We've had a lot of exciting projects over the last couple of years we've been able to share with you over that time. Everything's been working with the branding and the web portal that's been built, to looking at innovative city incentives, development, permitting, micro lending, financing, other things we're trying to tackle as a committee to try to bring some ideas to you as city council members to consider to help grow our business, our business community here in this fine city. But one thing we realized a few months ago, or actually about a year ago, is that, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about creating new businesses, but we really need to put some special emphasis on those businesses that have been here for so long and made Hickory the kind of city that it is. And a lot of businesses and organizations that have been here well over 75 years, so we want to take turns in making sure we're recognizing those organizations and letting them know just how important they have been to the growth and development of our city over those years. But with those projects also too, the kind of things we've been doing with the city incentives and permitting, actually even one of the projects done by the PDC includes our grant review process. So it'll be an upcoming report tonight, or tonight's agenda, for a vacant building revitalization and demolition grant agreement for the Z Loop knitting mill that was reviewed by the BDC at our last meeting. So some proof tonight of some things that we're trying to work on and trying to do for the city as well. But as an extension of the Life Well-Crafted, the city of Hickory established the Business Well-Crafted Award to recognize and thank those businesses and their employees who have made a huge contribution and impact on this community for many, many generations. The award honors businesses that have been in the Hickory area and operating for at least the last 75 years. Now, tonight's organization, I was very honored to be able to come up here and present. I tell everybody I spent more time on this campus than I did my own college campus growing up, which is no lie at all, even though every single member of my family went to this university except me, I believe. Mother, father, sister, aunt, uncle, the other aunt and uncle, cousin, everything you can imagine. So I basically grew up on Linnorine University's campus and have some of my fondest memories from that place. So it really was a great honor to be asked to come and present this award and present it to the city council, let you know that we want to reward Linnorine University with our Business Well-Crafted Award tonight. This is an organization, a university, founded in 1891. There's a wonderful article up on hickorywellcrafted.com I encourage everybody to check out. Founded in 1891, which was just 28 years after this city was founded, so it's been with us a long, long time in our history as a city as well. Since their small beginnings, they now offer over 50 majors and 20 graduate programs, educated thousands upon thousands of students at this point. We see many of those students working in our community and in our business environment here every day, doing some great things for the city even after they graduate. We could talk about the education of all the thousands of students, but we'd be remiss of not realizing that this has also been an institution that's provided so much to us in the area of arts and culture, athletics. I've still got football at Linnorine University on Saturdays. It's still some of my best memories growing up as a kid, and something I hope more and more Hickory citizens take advantage of over the years. Community support, seeing the students out there getting involved with community activities and volunteer efforts. Lot of great things with Linnorine University. All those things really sum up to show that how great a selection this is for us to be given this award to tonight. So I'd like to call up several of the representatives that we have from Linnorine University, Dr. Powell and several others. I think he's going to come up here and introduce to us tonight recipients of tonight's award.
I don't know the protocol here, but if it's okay, I'd like to talk to the city of Hickory and the city council, is that okay? And at universities, you don't follow protocol, so we can file it. So first of all, thank you, Alan. There is hope. We have a lot of programs.
I understand.
You've got a guy that's stepping in. There is that issue, better than that. So thank you so much. As many of you, you probably know that this has been the millennium of Linnorine. We emerged as North Carolina's premier liberal arts university over the last decade, and that's really been quite an accomplishment. I wanted these ladies and gentlemen to be here because these are the reasons why that's happened, just starting from this side. Rachel Nichols is our vice president for enrollment management. Is a Linnorine graduate, of course, been with us quite a few years, even though she's still not part of the youngest of us all, and is responsible for the unprecedented enrollment of Linnorine in these very difficult times. Maggie Greens, Director of Marketing and Communications, a Linnorine graduate? Yeah, but there's still time. But it's very, very active in helping us engage with the community and let her know what's going on. Dr. Larry Hall, our university provost, has been with us starting the seventh year now. Time moves on, is a master of creating academic programs, has led the initiative to revitalize graduate education. We this fall will have 500 graduate students at Linnorine University. That is significant, very significant. And Dr. Hall is also a master of entrepreneurship, and has just created the Center for Entrepreneurship of Linnorine. This will be beginning this fall, so among many other great initiatives. And then Dr. Drew Van Horn, who is our vice president for institutional advancement, is leading the great campaign, which is just finishing with $5 million chapel that's under construction now, and soon the beautiful science center, which will be the showcase for Western North Carolina, on that campaign committee with Dr. Van Horn, other than the honorable Rudy Wright, who is helping us with raising the funds. Dr. Van Horn was president of Brouard College for eight and a half years before he got his life straightened out in Linnorine. Very distinguished individual. So thank you so much for this. The reason that we have done so well is these people, but it's also you, and that's why I wanted to talk out here, and you, Linnorine and Hickory grew up together. It's been 123 years now, and the reason we succeed is because we have support from the officials, but also the people of Hickory. Our board is the who-to of Hickory. You just have to look it up and you'll see that. But the people in general, the people that run the small stores, that do the gas stations, every place are friendly to our students and to our faculty, and that's what makes it such an ideal, and that's why it works. So thank you all so much, all of you and Alan.
What do you say? We want to have a group photo.
Oh, okay.
We're all going to spy those guys.
I'm probably tall.
I didn't get it.
Second hand.
And now, the very high committee used the special presentation.
I did want to thank the BDC. Thank you, Alan, for your leadership, for what you're doing, your group works very hard, and we appreciate it.
And by the way, Alan's parents were just honored as the LR Business Council Business People of the Year. So this is a good, quick, turnabout affair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager, Ms. Andrea Surratt, to come to the podium, and she is going to begin a presentation and then introduce some very special guests we have with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. It is my humble privilege to be in front of you tonight, just as a staff person with great news for the community of Hickory. We have the opportunity to have a substantial gift from the Robert W. Lackey senior family to enhance Rotary Geithner Park. And so in a few moments, I'll introduce the members of the Lackey family and invite them to come up and share a few more details about the project concepts. But first, I would like to review briefly with you and with the audience, the gifts that have resulted in park spaces and in public buildings all across Hickory that have been a source of inspiration to our community, because I feel like Hickory is known for these types of beautiful places that attract our citizens to a place where the public can gather. And so just, and each one of these park spaces and buildings needs its own full presentation, but I'm just going to go and hit the highlights. So I don't want you to feel I'm rushing, but I'm trying to get all the way through so you can hear about the new project. So you know about Carolina Park, and we recently celebrated Ivy Arboretum's 75th year. And this is a city of Hickory park that was acquired in 1904. And it was originally seven acres. It was known as Carolina Park, and the city worked with a local industrialist, George Ivy, to create the arboretum. And the city did that and took that into its repertoire in 1936 for future maintenance. And originally, that had 250 species of trees, and in 1991, the city authorized the restoration of the park through the Community Parents Commission with the leadership of many citizens and our council member Sally Fox. So that's just one perfect example of a great natural space that people can go to in Hickory. You're familiar with the Schuylkill House and Gardens? The city acquired the gardens as a donation in November of 1964, and the house was later purchased by the city in 1971 to complete a perfect setting for special occasions. And here's a picture of the gardens. Macomb Park was acquired by the city in 1938 from the heirs of H.D. Macomb and D.M. Macomb to be specifically used for as a park, as it was listed in the deed. And then most recently, St. Aleutius Catholic Church donated the sculpture Fly Away, and it was dedicated in that same garden. So again, gifts that keep providing opportunities for new gifts. It's just a nice theme. Patrick Beaver Memorial Library. In terms of structures made possible in part by a donation, the Patrick Beaver Memorial Library is a landmark in Hickory, which benefits the entire community. And it was made possible in part by a $1 million donation in 1997 from the Beaver family, so memorialized Patrick Beaver, their son, who was killed. And so just a chance to celebrate the life of someone and also give back to the community as a place to gather and learn. You're all familiar recently with the Zara Baker Children's Playground, and that's an example of a civic club that took the lead. The Quanis Club raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for that project. And now you have just a fabulous space for children to play. And this is just a short list, really, of all of the many gifts and partnerships that the city has participated in over the years. And in fact, the John Bud Geithner Building at Rotary Park on the site of this major renovation that we'll speak about tonight is also an example of a project made for a former chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. So again, we just have so many places that we can gather, and those are often in honor of others. And so I'd just like to take a moment just to say that, just a few words, that gifts are special. They honor something or someone, and they bring joy to the recipient. And so each one of us in this room, each one of us has been given a gift. We've been given that gift either as a material item, or as a service, or as just a gift to the heart that we give back to other people. And so these acts of selflessness often help others, and that's really what the spirit of this gift is, is just honoring someone who had tremendous acts of selflessness that then benefited the lives of so many. And so Mr. Lackey will share with you the details of Mrs. Lackey's life and how she was a gift to many. I did not know her. I though found her obituary in the December 2011 Hickory Daily Record. And I just must say that her story reflects the impression that she must have had as a source of light and joy to so many, because the words and the photo just danced off the page. They really did shine in a way that you could tell that it was just celebrating the life of just a beautiful person. And so Mr. Lackey called later that winter. He called me one day, and I didn't realize the connection. I had seen the obituary, and I talked with him on the phone, and he described what he was thinking about, his wish to honor Mrs. Lackey. And that was clear in his tone and in his words that he chose that day on the phone with me, and this project really underscores that passion. And so it just moves me that he had that love and then that way to express that and wanted to do that in the public setting, in a place that will give back to so many. And so this is Deidra Templeton Lackey. And so Deidra was born in Hickory and spent much of her life working on various ministry projects, mentoring and counseling young ladies, and working very closely with children and children's ministries around the world. Dee was an amazing designer and decorator, working on many big projects for the family companies over the years. She also had a passion for gardens and beautiful parks, and was a frequent visitor with Bob to the Biltmore House Gardens and the Brook Green Gardens in South Carolina near their summer homes. And the idea for a memorial park was inspired by these gardens, and it will include many spaces, including a conservatory with indoor plantings, event buildings with beautiful grounds and open areas along the water for outdoor events and performances. A great deal of emphasis will be focused on making the park an enjoyable and comfortable space for public use centered around features for children and adults alike. Dee and the family have been greatly influenced by their faith and believe strongly in the values of giving time and resources to others in their life and in the community. And so the philanthropic gift from the Robert W. Lackey senior family is in loving memory of Ms. Deidra D. Lackey. It'll be a memorial gift to the city of Hickory and the community, which will be the single largest donation in the city's history for improvements to Rotary Geithner Park. Approximately 20 to 30 acres of improved area at the waterfront and into the walking trail areas will be developed. And so the Robert W. Lackey senior family has approached the city of Hickory with a project concept for a public park and a redevelopment of this area into updated gardens and public space. And that project is estimated to be the single largest donation. And so I wanted to take this time then to show you how this fits into Inspiring Spaces, because amazingly enough, the phone call and the plan now dovetail nicely together, and that was never the intent. It was really, you know, a family searching for a way to honor her, and then this project being one that works into the plan. And so the waterfront park area, this is an area on the east side and west side of 321. And we've shown this map, it's been at our public meetings in April. The Inspiring Spaces Committee is still developing these documents for final approval, but this has been an area of focus, and it already has several parks. You know, are very familiar with the Glen Hilton Park, Rotary Gardner Park, J.C. Park, Hickory City Park. So this is a conglomeration of space that then could be more well-connected. And so those plans have not been developed yet, but they are being talked about as a way to not only be on the east side of 321 in those park spaces, but park your car and hike in between the parks, maybe even park your car on one side and travel underneath 321 on a pedestrian walkway over to an area along the lake that connects closer to the baseball stadium. So there's, there are so many cities that have river greenways and urban parks that are connected, so you can do a lot more than just go to one place. It gives you choices and multiple destinations, and your experience can be different every time. And so this is a chance to create and enhance one portion of this park or this park system pretty quickly, because this project is something that's in front of you tonight for consideration. And so just to zoom in a little better so you can see that detail of the draft map, just to show us the green area here. And so really, the area in the... time. And so this is a chance to, to create and enhance one portion of this park or this park system pretty quickly, because this project is something that's, that's in front of you tonight for consideration. And so just to zoom in a little better so you can see that, that detail of the draft map, just to show us the green area here. And, and so really, the area in the focus is the Geithner Rotary Park. The area proposed for redevelopment includes the Bud Geithner Building, the boat ramp, the fishing pier, the picnic areas, and other key amenities that will also be incorporated into the new design. And so this is an aerial photo, just to give you a better view and understanding of the current footprint and the topography of the park area. And so with this, even the Rotary Geithner Park has that history, that long history, connected with someone special, with John Bud Geithner. He was the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and we just think that this is a way to extend the life of this park and celebrate several families in this case. And so we'll come back to any of these photos, but I'd like to take a moment and introduce the family here tonight. And I'll ask them all to stand. There we are. No, I'm sorry. So this is Robert W. Senior Lackey, Lackey Senior, excuse me, and Robert W. Lackey Junior, and his wife Kipper Lackey, and the project managers Claudette, Van Scooyt, and Karen Waddell. And we're thankful, and thank you for being here tonight. Just to be brief, and I won't belabor, but I do want to introduce to you formally Mr. Robert Lackey Senior. And so he would tell me and call him Bob, and I will, and he was born in Hickory, and he's been here raising his two sons, Rob and Brian, along with Dee, and their family enjoyed Hickory as their home for the last many years. Now, he has a beautiful story, a very beautiful story about how he met Dee in the first grade, and that they became sweethearts, and that they got married. And I just think that's outstanding. So I hope, I hope you'll find that story or hear him tell it. So Bob is a CEO with a number of businesses, and he has employees all over, and he has a very successful business. He was an Illinois graduate in business and accounting. And so he has also been working on many building projects. UCF 242 is just one example of those. And so then his son, Rob, also lives here in Hickory and went to Elon. He has also been in the family business for the last 25 years. And he and his wife, Kipper, they have two sons, Austin and Cole, and I think they were on the golf team and featured recently for Hickory High. I saw that in the paper. So they're just a really active family. And then Brian, the youngest son, is an artist. He's very talented. He went to Savannah College of Art and Design, and he lives in Savannah now. And so he couldn't be here tonight, but I'm sure he is very proud of the family. And so I'd like to turn it over now to Mr.
I'll get this wrong. Council, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, John. Thank you for the opportunity. It's been, we work with the city on numerous projects, and this is just another one that we're very proud of. Difficult, but proud. But things like this can't happen with that wonderful people. Mundery has been fantastic. Warren, Mick, thank you very much. Matt, thank you very much. Chuck, I think is here as well. Without cooperation, you can't do this kind of stuff. It's just too big, too hard, and expensive. But it's a gift. But the best part of this is it's a gift that gave us a blessing. That's what I wanted to say. Matt, thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us come. Mrs. Relyea, I see good friends like Bruce and Sally. Good to see you again, Mick. Thank you very much for your department, all the wonderful things you guys have done for us, especially Andrea. We've set up a facility down in the beginning. You guys want to do what? You want to build it where? Well, there's a great story on how we merged our idea and this whole concept with the city of Hickory. We had been looking, Claudette and Karen and several other folks had been searching the city for a piece of land, and we were like, wow. We have got to find a piece of land. We looked everywhere. It was probably one week before we met Andrea, that we were riding down the river with problems boys in a boat. And we looked over and said, dang, go on, look at that beautiful piece of land over there on the lake. It went forever, and we said, oh, no way. That can't possibly be available. So we show up at the office with Andrea and some of the folks, and the office, Warren. They roll out a map, and they say, what do you think of this piece of land? And that was the piece of land, this right? Right. This was unreal. It was fantastic. So it was a god thing. It was just, all those pieces came together. But since then, we've had a lot of great meetings. We have interviewed probably a half a dozen design firms, major architectural firms who understand green, green modernism, and we have done a tremendous amount of work with our staff to pull together what we believe is the best firm. They're out of Atlanta, TSW, they've done many of these wonderful parks, and we're just so excited about their initial concepts. And we can't show you those tonight, but we hope to come back with some great, great drawings. We have ideas, as Andrea said, we really want to do a conservatory, an indoor dealer conservatories, and was inspired very much by the Biltmore House Garden Conservatory. So we fell in love with that idea, not necessarily the architecture with today's modernism, but something around that way where the public can come, come in, enjoy. We want to build a building that also is an event space where people can come in and have weddings and wonderful events, you know, for their families and their friends. And also, we just have all this great ideas about how we're gonna use the space out on the land and take events and have docks that are built out, beautiful docks where people can just hang out and have wonderful things. Perhaps a small amphitheater where four or five hundred people can gather at a time and just have great get-togethers and plays and things like that. We just feel like it would be a tremendous cultural event place, a living organism for the city of Hickory, and we're really excited about that. But we're in the early stages, and in that process, we've got a long way to go. We anticipate the cost will probably be in phases. There'll probably be a couple phases to the construction, and then continuing to improve on this property. We hope we can do that for many years to come. But our initial goal was to spend somewhere between $2 and $5 million, depending on what we decide to construct initially. And we think that, we think we can get up two or three buildings and probably get about 20 acres of new parking and new landscaping and new green areas to hang out and have a great time. So we really appreciate that. And of course, for Dee, this is great. Obviously, Rob and I are struggling a little bit. We have to worry about Dee, his mom, my wife. But she would love it and love the city and always want to see this place improve. And I know ladies like Sally Fox have spent their entire life doing that kind of stuff for our city. So we're real proud to be able to do that stuff, and I know she would be very proud of you folks and allowing us to do that. So it's really an honor, and hopefully be in a great partnership with you guys. If you so approve, we will work really hard, and we hope, three years maybe, three to four years in total probably, before we see it all on the ground and ready to go. So that's good. No questions.
I'm just really touched. This is just a wonderful gift for you to give to the city and to the citizens of Hickory. You all have had so much vision over the years, and I think you remember how excited I was when you bought the library. And what you've done there is great, and what you did with the Observer Building. I have no doubt in my mind this will be a beautiful place. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, you all have a great tradition here in Hickory of as great leaders in churches and schools and everything, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's awesome to have someone to do this for the city and with such big hearts. This is amazing. Thank you.
Well, you know, we talked about Inspiring Spaces and how we think that's, we don't know exactly how that's going to come together, but we think, we think we're gonna have a lot invested in it. And we think it's gonna be something around 25% local, 25% federal, 25% state, and 25% local community involvement and generosity. I never dreamed we would start off with this kind of project. It's just amazing. You've given us a, and pardon expression, but you're inspiring us to go through even higher goals.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. Well, I have to tell the story before we depart, because I'm going to be mad if I don't. Probably some of you are happy with the obituary, how my little Dee and I met. We absolutely did. In fact, it was 20 years after we got married that I found out how she really hooked me very early. We started in the evening, whatever that is, in first grade. I don't know what that is.
Somebody chasing somebody with a stick.
But 20 years after we were married, we're moving from one house to another, and there's a little jewelry box. And she says, if I were showing that, I said, no, it's in there. She said, look in that thing. Opened the little jewelry box, little white Bible that her grandmother had given her in the first grade when she was six years old. And she said, look in that thing. I said, opened it up. She said, read. In the first grade, she wrote, Mrs. Robert Lackey. And she had the date and everything. She had the right year and the right date. And I said, wow, honey, I did not know you had that much control. So she'll be very happy. Thank you very much.
How do we go follow that?
Well, we would actually ask for you all to formally endorse the work that, as Andrea and Lackey's pointed out, has been going on. At a staff level, we would like council's blessing to continue down the vein of pursuing this project together.
Project has not been designed yet, and that's the next step. And so that, that's what we would like, is just a chance to work with the Lackeys, move forward with the design, and then bring that back to you.
I'm glad you have our blessing.
And we have some funds that we can put into this, right? More?
It's gonna dovetail with your Inspiring Spaces. We don't know exactly how it's all gonna match, but there will be city contributions.
I want to make sure we have something said.
Well, if you need a motion, I gratefully accept for all of us.
And I second that for all of us. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say thank you, Lackey.
Thank you, Lackey.
It's unanimous. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Terry. I would be remiss, having stood here two times together to speak on the video tape question that we've been dealing with some over the last month. I would be very remiss if I didn't take a moment and, before you, and thank Ms. Arne Dedulla for her. It was a question that I asked in my presentation last time, and she was so quick to get back with me and to give me the information that I needed about statutory information on that. And I just wanted to thank her publicly before this body, and to thank you very much and express my appreciation for that very kind work of the board. Thank you. Any motion to approve the minutes?
Make motion.
Motion by Mr. DeSantis, by Mr. Seaver. I remembered you, Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. It's unanimous, and all members are present. Anything to be removed from the, we just have a motion to reaffirm and redefine on second reading. Motion by Ms. Patton, second by Ms. Fox. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. It's carried. Anything to be removed from the present agenda? Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion's unanimous. I'll turn it over to Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under informational items, so one item to report, and that's to report the mayor's travel mileage reimbursement to meeting with the North Carolina League of Municipalities on August 5th. Under New Business, we have one public hearing this evening, and I will ask the city's principal planner, Mr. Cal Overby, to come to the podium and present the item to council prior to the public hearing. And the item is a voluntary satellite annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor, right. Mr. Councilman, Mr. Crumlin. I have my consideration tonight. As Mr. Berry indicated, the voluntary satellite annexation of property located at 1076 Fox Chase Drive, petition with Mr. Christopher Kuhar. Some background on property, again, the property is located at 1076 Fox Chase Drive. It's approximately four tenths of an acre property. This is adjacent to an existing satellite annexation in the area there. The actual distance from the proper city boundary is approximately 1.8 miles. The reason behind the petition for annexation is to obtain city sewer service. City sewer service is available and part of development, and this lot is actually in the process of being connected to the system at this point in time. This land use is residential, and future land use is residential property. Basically, it's a single-family home. This map right here and front of us actually gives the idea of where the existing city boundaries are. Property shaded in blue shows existing city boundary. Property in question is highlighted in red. This bold red line represents the annexation boundary group between the City of Hickory and the City of Newton. Basically, everything on this side of the line is agreed to that the municipalities would not cross over that line of any future annexation activities that took place. This right here gives you a better picture of where it's located at with respect to the larger city itself. Again, City of Hickory is shown in blue. Yellow areas are actually ETJ of the City of Hickory, and some satellite annexations in this area. This is Stoneberg Village, at least the name of it, sewer plant at this location, and this would be the development here, and this would be the City of Newton in green. And there, ETJ shown in the purple color here. And this is showing existing zoning, R2 residential, pretty much just for the entire area being top of county, and R1 residential for the City of Hickory, which are basically two comparable zoning districts. Single-family residential, around a half-acre average lot size is prevailing characteristics of both of the particular districts. This is showing a small part of the City of Newton's development in the lower right-hand corner of the map. With respect to Hickory 23rd Plan, 23rd Plan basically calls all of this area, basically a low-density residential. In Hickory's terms, basically, single-family around two to three units per acre. That's what that designation typically means. And in conclusion, we did an evaluation of the request, and these were our findings. One met all the technical requirements for the annexation, have been met, subsequent with the annexation agreement with the City of Newton, and adequate public services available to serve the property. With that, I will close and answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Unfortunately, we only have to do this one lot at a time, no?
Yeah, that's what it seems like at this point. Adding to that, actually, I've had a conversation with an adjacent property owner, too, Ms. Kuhar, about a week ago, about the same thing. It looks to me that, this is just me talking, that when the development was built, we were on about four tenths of an acre block of average lot size, and it looks like in this particular area, for whatever reason, the soil wasn't the best suited for the septic systems that were put, and it looks like her system failed already, and her house is not quite 10 years old. So I mean, you're probably looking at, you're probably getting a domino effect in that particular area over time of actually pulling houses in because of a failure of septic systems in the area there.
Any other questions? We're going to open the public hearing in a second. In that public hearing, we allow up to 15 minutes to be shared, and one goes first to oppose the proposal, and then one goes to favor the proposal. And there's an opportunity for rebuttal and serve rebuttal. With that, I will throw the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'll move through with the annexation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Ms. Patton. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Second department or item of new business is a department report, and I'll ask you to...
That motion carries.
Second department, or item of new business is a department report, and I'll ask the city's committee development manager, Mr. Dave Wayne A., to come to the podium and present the vacant building revitalization and demolition grant for Z Loop Knitting Mill. This is the same project Mr. Jackson referenced, having gone through the business development committee's recommendation process last week.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crumlin. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a demolition grant application that we received for the former, I believe it was the Walton Knitting Mill. The address is 838 14th Street Northeast. And to give you a little bit of idea of where that is, it's about two blocks before you get to Sure Tape on Island Avenue, the cut through in order to get to public services as well. Little background on the demolition grant. It allows, the program allows for grants of up to $20,000 or 35% of the eligible demolition costs, whichever is less, for the demolition of vacant buildings within the urban revitalization area. This, I believe, is the third demolition grant that we've done since the guidelines were amended in 2011, and I believe, I think it would be the fifth overall for demolition. We've done obviously many more of the rehabilitation grants. The little background on the property, 838 14th Street Northeast. It's approximately 27,000 square foot, formerly used as a knitting mill. The applicant plans to spend roughly $86,300 in eligible demolition and site restoration costs, so this would be eligible for the full $20,000 grant. And this property, as Mr. Barry said, is owned by the folks next door to the site, the Z Loop Computer Recycling Facility, and they're planning on using this, basically repaving the parking lot and using it as a parking facility. These are some of the photographs from almost six years ago now, when I first took, this property's been vacant since I first started tracking vacant buildings in September 2007, and looks roughly the same now, just a little bit more, be like a little bit less copper at the site. This is another photograph of the side and rear of the building. The business development committee, as Mr. Jackson said earlier, recommended approval of the grant at their August 7th meeting. And with that, finish my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Do you want a motion or discussion?
I'll make the approval.
Motion by Mr. Gess, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That is unanimous. And I think, you know, I have, I think the council and all of us, the business development committee, Inspiring Spaces believes that Inspiring Spaces encompasses new job-related sites, and it encompasses facilities that are better, that are going to be better or more appealing as a main plot that has been activated and sure. I don't think it's a stretch to say that this is another Inspiring Space. Any appointments?
Yeah, I would like to appoint Mrs. Renee Keever to improve the development department. She is involved in SL operations.
Any others? You have a motion to approve that nomination, don't you?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion's carried. Any matter of authority agenda? General comments? Any new adjournments? Motion by Ms. Patton, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you for coming. It's an inspiring event.